This will be where they'll do a lot of their staging, so this grass will die. You know, over this fall and by next spring we'll have it. And then I think I put one picture of the gymnasium, so that's the, they re-sanded, repainted the floor and that's the design that they went with, so. Should be, should be able to get on it by next Monday, I believe, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my report. Nice questions?
I've got one for, are we getting close to the number of sandings that we can do enough for yet?
I was told that is the last one, but that's what I've heard.
I didn't hear the question.
I just knew that, I knew we were getting close to not being able to sand it anymore.
Oh.
I, I thought we talked about this between either the, the last or this, a couple more and then you have to look at.
The one that we have to do, we have to pull it up is the middle school. It cannot be sanded again, and so that actually, depending on where we come out funding wise, maybe one of our priorities for next year, to bid it out, get it done over the summers, they would rip out the floor, put a new floor in, so. Yeah, cuz that one is, it's, it's the original, I believe, fifty-five floor and it's been sanded multiple times, so. Yeah.
Wow, okay, thank you. And then we've got the academic assessment review.
So I just, I wanted you to have that, I, and I posted it, you have a hard copy in front of it, you, you've had it for a little bit of time as we, you know, one of the things, well, well, I like to do is have a goal, and so as we, as you set your goals or what goal you have for me, I'm open to this information, I can go through it. Um, did you have any questions about it? I mean, did you get a chance to look at the bullets? We tried, I tried to give you some summaries of, hey, here's positives and here's some opportunities for growth. The biggest thing that I think it, it stands out to me is, I don't know if we wanna call it summer slide, but our students at the end of third grade, let's say, as they move into fourth, we, we typically score lower, it doesn't matter which grade level at the beginning of the school year than the state, which always kinda puts us in a deficit. We may be at the state level at the end of the year, but then our, our start is a little bit lower to start the year, and that's, you know, I don't know, I wanna call it the summer slide, a lot of people will, but I don't know if it's just, we need more parent engagement, we need, you know, something because if you think about a third grader's at grade, grade level, they come in at fourth grade, it is a different test, but every other fourth grader took that same test and yet will score a little bit lower than the state and, but then we, we catch them by the end, and so. I just noticed it, um, I noticed in the third grade, if you look at it, if you look at the trend lines on like third grade, very high results as far as our trend lines are, are going, you know, except for when you look at the below basics, it's like more of a flat line, and that's your students that need true interventions, as an example, so we need to look at how do we, how do we do a better job on our intervention pieces at the third grade level? I will tell you, you know, having Mr. Uriarty as part of our staff as a math man, I think is going to help, you know, sixth grade and seventh, sixth, seventh and eighth grade math, our teachers are working their tails off. We're just not seeing all the results that we were hoping to see, I mean, it's not on the teachers and it's not on the kids, we gotta figure out what we're doing, I mean, they worked so hard. And the scores are improving, it's just, you know, we all want, we all want them to be right there and above, so. But then the bright spot is, by the time they get to the tenth grade and eleventh grade, when they take the ISAT the final time, they're above the state average, but if we can flatten out that drop, and, and that's across the state, sixth, seventh and eighth is, is a struggle everywhere, but if we can improve in those areas, it'll just, you know, take us even higher. Um, the WEDA scores, I didn't put the, the grab, the, the information in there on that because it was, it's so difficult to read through it, but that's our, our ELL test. It's, it's our, our students that come in, that, that don't speak the language, they're, they're, they're tested on different levels, and so that data's in there, but I did give you kind of a summary of the, of the assessment.
I was happy to see some of the trending is better than it was.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's going the right direction.
Yeah, some of the trending is definitely improved.
Yeah.
At least we're moving the right way, that's good.
Yeah, so, I, I still think we've got a couple areas to continue targeting, but we'll always work to get better at them, so. Okay.
Any questions on the academic assessment? If not, we can move to the athletics and activities report.
I asked Mr. Kevin to come on and just kinda give a few details of what's gonna happen this year or how the year winds, so.
Hello, this is Nick.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I just sat down and I just wrote some things that happened last year, some things that are looking forward to this year. We had quite a bit of attrition in our coaches, you know, for a lot of different reasons, one guy, it was his first year, I guess he decided it wasn't for him, and so we had to replace him. That was golf, and we went with Josh Bork, who I think is gonna be top sanding. He had a fundraiser golfing thing that went really, really well, I think that the community was super behind him from old timers to new timers, and it was really, really fun night. I'm excited about our girls soccer coach, she's pretty, pretty excited about the team and ready to go, and his name is Carson Bogey, and I think he'll do a great job for us. Ed Barney is gonna be our cross-country coach, and that guy is like seventy years old and he still runs like a twenty-two minute five K, he's in ridiculous shape. Coach that I'm super excited about is for wrestling, Matt Carrata, his wife owns the gym bet down there, Matt runs the business, and his wife is the veterinarian down there, and maybe the dude looks like he could still go out there and wrestle, he's in great shape. Super excited, and he's done a good job of fundraising already, sorry to get on that, so, I'm excited about him. Softball, I'm pretty excited about our new gal on that, her name's Taylor James, and she's one of our teachers upstairs that everybody seems to love, and I think she'll do a great job for us as well. Mr. Woods and I, we, we talked about maybe future facility needs, so I just kinda went through some things that I think would be nice for the school, the district in the future, whether or not that becomes a priority for, you know, administration or, you know, be a whole other thing, but some ideas that I had was, I mean, the one that you guys are already working on is auxiliary gym, that's really important. I know that there, you know, me as a high school guy, in a selfish way, I would love for that gymnasium to be at the high school for a lot of reasons. One of the main reasons I would, I would like to see that is, you know, the cost of that floor to be refinished is very, very expensive, and to be able to have an auxiliary gym where maybe they kept PE or something at that instead of being on our main court, cuz it goes to these nicer schools, the bigger schools and stuff, they don't even, people don't even play on their court, you know, unless it's game time or whatever. This, this new floor, like, it blew me away, it far exceeded my expectations of how beautiful it is, I think they did a phenomenal job. Some other things, you know, we talk in education, we, we talk a lot about equity, and generally when we're talking about equity, a lot of times we're talking about boys versus girls, you know, football versus volleyball or whatever like that, but there's a inequable thing that I've seen that, that I, it's not my favorite, and, and like I said, it might not be a, a big thing for a lot of people, but it is to me. I'm, I'm kind of a baseball guy, my son's a baseball player, and it just bothers me that our JV kids and baseball, a lot of times, they, varsity will play first cuz we don't have lights, and so then the JV kids get to play after the game. I just don't think that's fair for JV kids, so, some of the not like to work for in my future is to try to get the kids some lights, and then we could maybe host some tournaments and things too, so that's something I'd like to see. Another thing that has been, I don't wanna say problematic, but I do feel complaints from other A.D.s around the valley when they come to play tennis here, is some schools will have their varsity tennis teams, like, say we're playing BK, the varsity would go over to BK, and then JV would come over to Emmett on the same night. But we generally, to save, you know, transportation and things, we got our JV and our varsity go to BK, and then BK would then come with both of their groups here. The problem is we don't have six tennis courts at the city park, and so it makes that night go really late, and the other A.D.s and principals and stuff don't like that very much. One thing I, I would have liked to have seen, but I didn't know about it, one, is if they could have somehow, when you go to Settlers Park in Meridian, they have tennis courts, but then they, they have, where they can make them into pickleball courts as well. So I was wondering, you know, something we could look into in the future is maybe checking up the rec district, if there's any way to turn those pickleball courts for the spring season, if there's any kind of like portable nets or something that we could maybe use for just the JV tennis, maybe make a couple courts out of the pickleball courts, and then, cuz those, tennis, tennis courts are about five hundred thousand apiece, it's something my Caldwell was looking at getting eight new courts, and it's like four hundred dollars for the eight courts, so about five hundred thousand apiece. So that's something I would like to look into, is to see if there's any way that we could multi-use those pickleball courts at the park for those matches in the spring. Another thing that's been talked, talked to me about is a hitting facility, indoor hitting facility for the boys and girls softball and baseball and stuff like that. Some of those facilities, I'll also do some, have a little area where they can do some like agility type drills and stuff on the side, inside, my son used to play baseball, we used to go to Capital and we used to do some of that kinda stuff inside of their facility. So there's just some things there. You know, maybe in the future, I don't know, near future, but always a nice thing to bump up the stack ones for the coaches, I might help us retain some of those coaches. A couple of big things that we have coming up this year is on August twenty-ninth, we're gonna do a celebration of the two thousand fifteen Emmett Husky Football Championship Team, so they're gonna have, I believe the head coach has been invited, all the former players and stuff, and they'll do something for that halftime, that game on August twenty-ninth. I talked to Mr. Parks and he said that we also, there was a senior project to make a sign for the team, it's supposed to be out there. As all of you know, I did grow up here, and played basketball for Mr. Carlson, Mr. Tom Carlson, and his wife also was the PE teacher when I was at middle school here, and so I, I knew them really well, and I know that they gave a lot to our community, and so I kinda wanted to do something special for them, and so I got Mr. Parks and Coach Lopez, and what we did is we came up with an idea to host a game, and I can't remember the exact date, it's like, let's say it's like December seventeenth or something like that, it's almost like our first or second game of the season, and we're gonna bring the Vail Vikings over here for six games, so we're gonna do all three girls' games and all three boys' games on the same day, it'll be a Saturday, kind of the Super Saturday kind of thing, and we're gonna call it the Carlson Classic, and, cuz both of them are basketball coaches, and we're going to, this was Larry's idea, so that was a phenomenal idea, but we're gonna get MVP plaques made for the varsity, so one for each team, so one for Vail, one for Emmett Husky, best player, and we're gonna let the the Carlsons pick which kid on each team gets that award, so we'll be up for the boys' game and, and the girls' varsity game.
Nice.
I think what we're gonna do too is I think we're gonna have a couple of Blackstones and Cheddar barbecue burgers and hot dogs, and just kinda make it a big, you know, all-day event. Considered maybe doing a breakfast thing, cuz to do that, you have to start, we'll be starting like eleven AM or something, so I thought about maybe that, but I'll just have to see if there's some of our clubs or teams that wanna run something like that, so that's, that's in the works. Other than that, that's pretty much what I had, I wanted to know if you guys had any questions that you wanted to ask me.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ronnie.
In the lighting on the baseball field, have you looked at how many poles it would take to light that field?
Well, I haven't, but I think it's probably like four or five.
So five fucking poles, okay.
It'll be, it'll be substantial cost, I'm sure.
Okay.
It's something I, I, I'm kinda big on mainly because I don't think it's right for the JV kids to.
We've needed light, we needed lights for years.
Yeah, it's something I, I would like to see.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? No, um, yeah, I appreciate you guys having me here, and thank you.
I appreciate what you're doing, thank you.
Moving on to informational items, we have certified staffing.
Uh, just a list of work classifieds, our resignations from the end of this, this year basically, AVM, when we talk about AVM, they're just, they've transitioned to, they're transitioning to AVM, so they're not our employees anymore, so it's, it is a reduction force, but it is not like you, they rip or rip from their jobs. Transfers in positions and then new hires across the, the district, so.
Any questions?
Couple things, just, just to highlight, I mean, we, with Randy Marquez leaving us as HR, we moved Cynthia Miekom into the HR role, which is kind of a domino, we moved our payroll up into the IC role, and then we hired Laura White and Kelsey Poller to take over, Ms. Poller's taken over Olivia's job, which is a business admin assistant, so, yeah.
And then we actually have, as noted earlier, the Wright Brothers EMS project.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Kimball was unavailable, so I just kinda put a few things down there. Anticipated permit application date is August first, I apologize for the typo. Hundred percent dry ends completion week of August eleventh is his plan. The reason why he's kind of pushing off on that is because if the code, if they come back and there's some code changes they have to do, they didn't wanna give us a, this is the exact cost, yet, you know, and then come back and two weeks later say, hey, we've gotta update, up this or what, so. Uh, the temporary fencing will be around then three removal by the eighteenth. Phase one will be the electrical work, and they're gonna start on the, the middle school annex cuz there's enough power to run the heating and cooling system there. So they're gonna start with the, what is their type, uh, our resource rooms, our, our special ed rooms and our art room will be, and they'll move across that way with, with the systems, and then they'll finish up the, the other side, which is the drafting, before they move into the buildings, and so that way they kinda get those, those completed. Target date is installation, now installation of the units. They're gonna be doing power as soon as they get the permit, you know, and, and they get the okay from us to move forward, they'll start on the power piece. And Idaho Power still have, I mean, they're, we're kind of at their mercy when they're gonna come in and, and drop the, the new transformer and stuff, so. Any questions? These are the, just the same pictures of the same area that I showed in mine.
So I do have a question about that, Mr. Chair, so when they, when you pull those trees out, because that's always been a shaded area for the kids, like at lunch and stuff, are we gonna look once it's done? Cuz obviously you're not gonna be able to plant trees back there if they're gonna have electrical in the ground.
Once we find out where they're at, well, we have to do something, whether we have, maybe put a cart, you know, like a wall, like, you know, like, like we have out by the playground area, where it's, and it's like a, what do you see in the park, what are the pavilion or? Like a pavilion, kind of, something like that, yeah, that'll be something to look at. I rarely see kids actually there during lunch, they're all, they're all out on the playground.
And when I was at school there, there was kids in there all the time.
There were tables there.
They may not let them in there during lunchtime cuz there's nobody to supervise in that area, so.
So they try to keep them pushed out there?
Yeah, probably.
Do we, do we know when the floor at the, the gym floor there is gonna be redone before the school year?
Yes, it'll, it'll be done, ready to go before the school year starts, as far as.
You don't know the weekend or anything?
What weekend it'll be off limits?
Yeah.
All I told them is it had to be completed before August eleventh, cuz I'm assuming, and they're just, they're really, because they're gonna be working in there and all that building, they're doing the basic maintenance this year as far as cleaning up, you know, polishing the floor, not gonna do a full sealant on that, yeah.
So it'll be quick?
It'll be quick, yep.
Any other questions on that one? Not with the, the homecoming dance location.
ASB would like to get approval, which they really truly don't need approval, they just kinda wanna let you know that they're planning on doing the homecoming dance on, as a street dance down on Main Street, so they'll have to go in front of the city council, ask them to, to block off the road, but that was kind of a neat way to do their homecoming dance, so.
Do they have a backup just in case there's weather or something like that that night?
Haven't heard.
Okay.
So, they sent it to us and I said, hey, we'll put it up, there's information, but we'll find out. I mean, they put it in the gym more than likely, but we'll make sure there's a backup. Yeah.
Good deal. What happens? And then as far as budget items, we've got the bill review. I spoke with Mr. Brady, he was not able to be here tonight, he did not pull out anything or raise any concerns, does anyone else have any concerns on the bills or anything to be pulled out or discussed?
Janet does.
I, I just had one, I, I can't remember what is Accra, 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 Cusher?
Yeah.
Accuure. What, what, what is that?
That's the, our, part of our insurance sheets, they're the ones that do our, uh, negotiations for brokers, yeah.
Okay, and then I already asked you about the, the dog waste stations.
Yep.
And then there was a group of kids YMCA camp that went to horse thief.
Yes, that was.
Which was the group?
So the Shannon Anderson runs that middle school group, well, it's a YMCA group, but it's for the after-school program, and they wanna do that.
Okay, just random questions, that was it.
Thanks for answering, anyone else have any questions on those? If not, we need a motion to approve the bills.
We approve the bills?
And I'll second it.
All right, second by trustee Heinz, any further discussion? All in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. All right, so policy, we have first reading, so we're not voting on these, but just to be made aware of. First one is fifteen hundred board meeting, board meeting procedure.
So this one just defines where we're at, as far as our meetings, you'll see the changes. And there we go, in green, and shall not include fee resolutions or items required more than simple majority for consent agenda, so we can't just increase our fee through the consent agenda. This was a pretty minimal one, I believe, taking out that.
Was there, there's been some heartache over that, right?
What?
There's been some heartache over that, right? If I remember right, is that why you're changing that wording?
No, that's coming from the, this, this is recommendations by ASBA, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's been some heartache over that, if my memory serves me right.
Well, there was some heartache when we had some of the, in the consent agenda that we had started pulling them out, and all we do is our basics, yep. You are correct. Policy one forty, and I hate the red that I get, quorum is permitted, it's been deleted, remaining members of the board shall constitute a quorum, so this is if we have the tiebreaker piece, so. Okay. Deletion there, and that's it for that one.
Any question on fifteen hundred?
I hate that red.
That's fifteen R.P., now we have, next up is fifteen hundred B one, board meetings and board operating procedure.
So this one goes along with the change in Idaho code, it says, the board will accept in-person public comment in every regular meeting before action is taken on district business, including consent agenda, except the board may take a public comment on items not related to the board agenda at another specific time during the meeting. We have our second reading on that one a little bit later, and the board will consistently follow the public participation procedures outlined in policy forty-one oh five. That's to allow, basically, if you choose, our agendas can now have two different public comment periods, one on act, one on anything as action items prior or agenda, and then one, you know, at any other point you'd like to put it, or wherever we choose to put it in there, so.
So as we've done, but we could add a second, separate section if we've got a topic where we're wanting it to show copy.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Any questions on that one? Twenty-three twenty.
Uh, here we go, twenty-three twenty is changed, I think this is the correct one. Yeah, this is twenty-three twenty health, sex education, human sexuality, these, this is all based on Idaho code changes. So what you have is the sex education and what it can, so it defines it, doesn't mean that we teach it. So I wanna make sure we're just reading through this on this first time through, as you walk through this whole thing, there's a couple areas in your instruction and any topic, what grade level it's defined. There's an option here, says the board directs that a philosophy of abstinence shall be a part of, of an underlying principle in all sex education, or the board directs that sex education instruction shall include instructions in abstinence, so that'll be something you'll need to make a decision on. One or two, I mean, and then as you walk through this, and as we get into this grades five through twelve, there's, if you look at it, there's this high-definition fetus, you know, embryo that you have to show as a video, and it's an opt-in as well, I believe it's down in this one a little bit farther, maybe it's the next one over. I'm sorry, I got ahead of it. This one talks about HIV and different safe havenes, exactly, I'm sorry, the next policy talks about it, so.
I like, part of this, which, you know, again, this is just a reading, but one of the things I think the community will like is anytime we're showing any of these videos, they have to, every child has to show a written permission slip from their parents, sign, if they don't produce that, they don't just default in, they're actually, without a permission slip signed, they're defaulted out, so. No one's kids are gonna be hearing things that parents haven't been made aware of.
Right, it's an opt-in only.
Yeah, but what I like about that, then it becomes a parent's responsibility to worry about whether or not they're gonna get that passed or not, so they can go online and take it from an online instructor. But that's why I like it. If they choose to opt out, it's on them to figure out how their kid's gonna get passed off.
All right. So this is the P one, I think, this is the complaint form that they built. If you have a parent complaint, this is all new, a brand-new policy that just basically, they just put in a reaction, and what you can do is as you walk through it.
On either of those? All right.
Okay. I close some of these out, I got two more. Open enrollment, just some edits to this.
That's three thousand, entrance placement and transfer.
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. Mostly, almost all of these are based on new Idaho code that was adopted this year or put into law this year, and this one deals with, we give you, it gives the district the opportunity to not enroll somebody that was going to be expelled from another school district. It's denying enrollment, so that's what this one is focused on. You don't have to accept them even if they've been expelled and, and there's a process for it, so. Which is good.
Oh, that's good, I just got a whole nother question about that. What, why is this school district always chose to been open enroll? Is it just to try and, for funding, try and get?
The state actually requires, a, a student can open enroll in anywhere in the state, and we, I mean, if they do it by a certain date, we basically have to let them in, you know, unless.
So how is New Plymouth and Fruitland and all these guys getting away with telling kids that they, they can't?
And that's where the unless comes, unless they, they don't meet the ratio as far as student-to-teacher ratio, or if it's gonna be an undue.
Burden.
Burden on, and it's not gonna be an overburden on like our special ed population or staffing or something like that, then you can deny that way, so.
I just know they've used it.
Oh, yeah.
Way stronger than that for lots and lots of years.
Well, it changed two years ago, this, this, this could be our third year with this new open enrollment, you can just, you can go anywhere you want, so.
Cuz there's still parting ways to tell people no.
Oh, yeah, there's ways to tell people no, I mean, if they don't meet the deadline, you can tell them no, you know, right off the bat, we, we typically will review anybody and everybody up until, I mean, we, we're gonna be switching students from one school to the next, you know, as late as the first week in August, because they would like to go from Buu Buu to Carberry or vice versa, so. Okay?
More questions on that one?
Yeah.
Which one do we up to? Open enrollment?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I think I opened one.
That's, we're at thirty-ten, aren't we?
I'm not doing well here. Not the one I opened?
I think you opened three thousand.
Correct.
That's three thousand.
I didn't see it there.
You gotta click it.
I did, oh, down there, I'm not very smart today.
Come on, you got this, Chris.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody's, you know, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, there is.
Disenroll, lose discipline, so this also defines it as far as student's conviction of edu, education of offenses, so. So they're going to be, they decided disenroll instead of being expelled, we can deny, deny their open enrollment. So.
That is a huge blessing.
Same thing over here. Okay. Again, all these are first reading. So next.
Thirty ten P one.
Enrollment procedures.
Again, just kind of walking along the line of excluding people. And here's one of the ways that you can exclude. If you, if you have a K one number, your class sizes are over twenty. That's, that's the one that most of the time. Okay.
Very good.
Thirty-five twenty-five.
Immunization requirements.
Fun, fun, fun.
I read through that one. I don't think.
Did you have any questions on that one?
No, the basic thing there is basically, yes, it's required, but if someone religious or really any other belief system says they don't want it, they can sign an opt-out. So we need to have a record of why a child's not immunized, but that could basically be because mom and dad said they don't have to be. So I don't see anyone having an objection to this.
No, and, and we have a form that they used for the opt-out piece. And so it's already, we already documented and hold on to it.
I just had the question. Do we have a lot of students that opt out? Is it enough that it potentially can be a real problem?
It can, but one of the things, so let's just say measles or something that, okay, we, there's an outbreak. We can actually deny anybody that's not, that has not been immunized. We can actually say, you can't come to school during this outbreak. We, and we talked about that at one point with COVID. Not with, I mean, not with COVID, but that was when we had the discussion on the policy. It does allow us to do, do that based on the immunization. So if, because we're trying to protect them as well. And so it's not that, that would be a board decision saying, we're going to deny students that have this because we want to stop the spread of measles, let's say within, for whatever length of time. We're still going to provide the services, but we're going to, for the next week, you're going to, you're going to usually stay home. Or whatever the incubation period is. Yeah.
So by a lot, do you mean ten percent? Do you mean twenty-five percent?
Immunization probably between, I'm going to say between ten and twenty, but I'll get you the exact number.
No, that's, that's.
No, it's good. I mean, it's, I think it's in the eighties. So I know that. Eighty percent are.
Eighty percent are.
Well, there's several parents that are immunized for, like, certain ones, and then they.
And they don't.
They opt out on three or four of them.
Yeah, yeah, that happens quite a bit, too.
Okay.
And it, there's a higher number in the last five years than there were. Yeah. Okay.
All right, thirty-three forty.
Again, deals with corrective actions and punishments for denial of enrollment. We look at this one. Yeah, denial of enrollment. There's so many, that, this is all based on that Idaho code. And it gives us a little bit better option of saying, hey, you can't come to school here.
Oh, it protects all the districts. Because the parents can't just say, well, we'll just send them to another school. Yeah.
Okay.
And then the last one on our first reading is the public participation in a board meeting. I feel like this was directed at me.
Oh, it changes in it. That's a good one, though. We used to have it, but now it's related to the board agenda, which is what Idaho code was last year, that it only could be board agenda items. This allows for input on just basically on anything. The board may take public comment on items on the board agenda before, before action items, and reserve a space at the end of the meeting. Public comment and items not before the board for discussion, which we denied some last year. Based on the Idaho code, it had to be on the agenda. Now you need to be able to allow them to speak unless it's on personnel topics. It doesn't have to be at the first one. It could be at a second one, which means we could do our business items. And then at the end, you could have your agenda item or time for them to speak if they have something they just want to bring up.
So you were a pioneer.
Yeah. So at the end of the meetings, then, does one will probably hold those?
That's when we, our recommendation, we put it in there, because that way we can get all through all the business items.
Yep.
And then at the end, they could do that. So I think we have our second reading on that. How we set up our agendas is second readings today.
And I think a good thing there is then you know they're serious because they stayed the entire time to actually talk about it. So.
I thought about putting in, you know, closer, but then if you get, it takes so much time. Now we're trying to get through our business piece.
Right.
That's what this is. It's a business meeting, you know, with the public allowed to, to take, you know.
Yeah.
Part of it.
Absolutely. If we get to be here for free, I like it. We're all committed. We're all committed.
I'm definitely committed.
So now we're under our second reading, and I believe that's the first one up fifteen hundred.
First one up is basically defines it where we put it.
It's all open.
So we put it, patron input on agenda items and then patron input after our action items. So. That's what we had for a second reading. Nobody made any different recommendations. So.
We have a, like a timeframe that we can.
It's still, it's still limited to the three minutes.
It's still limited to three minutes.
I mean. Yeah.
But is that for each section?
Yeah, there could be thirty minutes up here and there's.
I didn't read through it close enough to see if there was, there's, so there is a time. I mean, we don't have to sit here for three and a half hours.
Take comment?
Yeah.
First come, first served.
This is the second reading. I've asked if you feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, I like.
No, I like the placement. Yeah.
Well, we need.
We need an action. It's an action item.
Oh, it is.
Now we're into action.
Yeah.
I saw action items further down. So, okay.
So move to approve fifteen hundred board meetings, meetings defined.
Second by Mr. Weeks.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That one's done. And move on to fifteen hundred F.
Fifteen hundred F is a new form. It's identical to, in this second reading on it, but it's identical to what Milton uses for requests to speak to the board. It's just basically defines it. And then the input sheet of what their topic is so that, because, and here's the reason why I like this is because as, as, you know, the chair, chairperson of the board, you know, they start going off topic and started talking about personnel. You have a chance to stop them, but remember, you, this board has been through agreements because we couldn't get them stopped quick enough. And then at least we have something saying, well, this is not what they were planning on talking about.
Yeah. So can you scroll down a little?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It, it is, that is defined in there, right?
What?
That, it says that you cannot talk about.
You want to go back up?
I can't. I read it the last time when you showed us here a month or so ago, showed us this. I can't remember.
Well, it says discussion of personal matters, personal attacks are not appropriate.
Right.
Yeah.
In order to be recognized, it says, us prior to the beginning of the meeting, sign the public input sheet, you know, kind of what they need to do.
No, I just, I would like them to be reminded in that form because they have to sign it saying that they, they can't direct it with personal names either.
Is it, is it not enough that?
Personal matters, personal attacks.
Is that enough? Or do you want it?
It just says are not appropriate.
Are not appropriate.
It should almost say are not, cannot be allowed or something.
Not acceptable? Well.
I, I don't care that they talk about the individuals, but I don't, I don't want them coming in here and, and using it.
They can't, I have to say.
Well, they can't.
Names or whatever else. Yeah. As soon as they identify someone, then you've got a, a public meeting grievance against someone that may or might not be accurate.
So then isn't that up to Mike then to just enforce this?
Well, it is, but what, what I'm saying is, is if, 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 where we've already had that grievance, I, I might be putting the cart before the horse. Maybe this is, if we have to go to court, a grievance court, that this is enough, they've signed it saying that they weren't going to talk about that stuff. And then, you know, they can't win a grievance. I just was thinking, if we specifically say that you cannot mention personnel's name within the meeting and you, and use their name, that.
Or would we just change it to say discussion of personal matters or personal attacks are not allowed? Leave it at that. Edit it to that. And then if that.
Does that make?
Yeah.
They always ask, ask us, does that make sense what I'm saying, though? I want, I want to protect ourselves from another grievance.
I need to.
I like that.
I, I think not allowed is better than not appropriate.
Okay.
Because appropriate, sometimes we go beyond anyway.
We could, we could subvote on this and just say.
Approve with that.
Approve with the exception. Get it up not allowed.
Okay.
Because then Mike can re, you know, you can always reiterate to them that, hey, we can't be doing this. But we have it in writing that they weren't going to do it.
Yeah, we gave you a forum with the understanding that this wouldn't happen.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Would this take place of my red sheet that's out there now?
It also, it says right in there, you still have to sign up public input.
Oh, so they have to do both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I need to irritate.
We can get you. So, all right. So then I just need a motion to approve with that edit.
I, I move that we approve. Where are we at here?
Fifteen hundred F.
Fifteen hundred F with the change of the word appropriate to allowed. All right.
Not allowed.
Not allowed. Not allowed, correct?
Not allowed.
Well, it says not allowed, what's not allowed.
Okay, you're right. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Janet. Give me a second on that.
I'll second.
By Mr. Buck. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving fifteen hundred F with the edit? Say aye.
Aye.
I see unanimous. All right, moving on to twenty-four fifty online education fund.
So this is a new policy, and this policy helps us with our online school as far as the fifteen hundred dollars that would be of allowable expenses would be reimbursed. This fund is completely set aside, and that's why it's completely red. But this would be, the defining policy has been embedded by legal counsel. Yes, it meets the requirements, accountability and equity and oversight. So this would be for our students that are full-time and within our new virtual academy. And just for informational pieces, this is the preapproval form that goes along with it. But it's, it's, this is not, this is just the form. You don't have to, you're, you're approving the policy to begin with.
Okay.
If you approve it. So this is what they would do. They'd fill out this form. It'd be signed off by, right now it'd be Mr. Weineger, and, and then the reimbursement would be tracked as well.
Very good. Any questions on that? So thank you for getting that put together. We see a motion to approve twenty-four fifty.
So motion.
By Mr. Weeks. Second?
I'll second.
By trustee Heinz. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving twenty-four fifty, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous again. And moving on to thirty thirty.
Oh, man, I skipped over one. We have another one. Oh, yeah, this is the one we need to talk. I can't believe I skipped this one. This is our dual enrollment, not a joke. This is for dual enrollment, but this is for students that do not attend MIT School District and sports fees.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. So all this was new information as far as what we had last time. And then through our discussion with the patrons, I put everything in blue. So nothing in red has changed. The, the green was what we had, but our discussion was MIT Middle School. We've dropped from one fifty to one hundred. Per sport and extracurricular activity fee would include their combo card or their activity card is what is defined. So they wouldn't have to pay one hundred here and then plus a combo card. At the high school.
Which allows them to go to high school athletic activities, correct?
Is it high school athletic? I thought it was just a middle.
Just their middle school.
Middle school.
Is it just? Is it just middle school or is it high school? I was under the impression that a, a middle school student could then go to a high school athletic event with their middle school card to get in.
Do the middle school kids do that?
I don't think, we did it last year, but I don't know if they did it in the past.
We've never done it. We've never done it.
We've never allowed the middle school to get into the high school event.
What they've done in the past, and I, I don't know why they went away from it. What it used to allow, like when I was in school, is you could go over and you only had to pay like, if it was a five dollar entry, you only had to pay two.
Right. It was a discount.
And so you got like a huge discount, but we've never been able to use in my life.
Middle school.
Use a middle school pass to get into.
I didn't attend middle school here. I just finished my last two years.
And my understanding was the combo card or it was their athletic card for their school. It wasn't to go to others, but that's how I had written it.
But I think on the booth, it has a June.
Well, it used to. I don't know. I haven't any attention either, but you used to get a huge discount and it was only like.
Now that I get in free, I don't worry about it. Anybody, well, okay, now that, now that we're looking at this.
Spit it out.
I just kind of like the idea of a middle school athlete, if they want to go support their high school athletics, why would we make them pay if they're already paying for the sport that they're in right now? And they, and they get a court, a card. I don't see any reason why we, why we charge them to get into a high school event.
And just for clarification my part, this is only for students who are either dual enrolled or not enrolled, correct?
At this point.
Well, but up top too, if you, if you have, I just feel like if you have a.
All right, that's why I'm going to ask you those, because are we trying to change this across the board or is it specific to these students?
I was thinking.
Okay, because.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because, well, my concern is going to be, I get it. Well, I, so are, are middle school students that are going to our school.
Yep.
Are paying a fee. They're paying for the activity card on top of that to attend whichever they're going to do. So they're going to do that, but a gym, and so that somebody, if it's a gym prep academy or homeschool is just going to pay the one fee and be able to get into everything.
Well, I was thinking if you have a card, if you have your, what are we calling it? The activity card, if you're a middle schooler. You have that activity card, which means whether you pay the thirty-five bucks because you're a full-time student or a hundred dollars per sport because you're a homeschool student, you get an activity card, right? Do they all get an activity card? Because in middle school, sports are free to go to anyways.
Yeah, yeah. Sports are free at the, at the middle school level. It's, it's the high school level.
Right. That it costs money to attend.
But, but our high school students don't pay to get in.
They do not?
If they have an activity card, they don't.
Pay to get in.
Right.
Otherwise they pay five dollars.
Right. I'm not trying to ruffle feathers. I just, I was just under the impression that if they, they would be able to get into the athletic sports as well, or the.
I, I understand, and I completely understand where you're coming from. I just, I know there was reasoning for them doing that. I just don't know why at the time.
Well, I could tell you why.
Good.
Because none of the middle school monies, like for their activity card, that goes for their sports and their stuff.
Not for the, not for the high school.
Whereas like, we, we really, we lose money on a lot of our sports.
Sure.
At the gate. But like football games, for instance, you know, all that gate money is important for us to pay for operational type stuff like officials and those kinds of things. Some of our schools, or some of our school sports, the cost of their officials as well, they won't be actually making money. So we could lose money. I wouldn't, I kind of liked the idea that one of you brought up, was Mr. Buck. Maybe we discount for them, that we are, Mr. Weeks, maybe two dollars for if they have that in the card, then all of the middle school gets up for two dollars or something. That way we still get a little bit of money.
Yeah. Like I say, personally, I'm okay with this one as written. Like I say, I'm okay with discounting for them, but.
I'm good either way. I just, I just know that.
This is, this is fine for me, too. I just, I, I just, I think that was my confusion, that I thought that if they paid homeschool or not, if they paid and got an activity card, that got them in high school games. I just wasn't sure. And that's just my lack of knowledge about how it works to get in high school games.
And my only other, other concern that I would have is, and I've seen this as a, as a high school principal, is a lot of junior high parents just drop them off and say, we'll see you in a couple hours.
That's, that's.
And I think that was part of the reason behind it, too. Is because they didn't, they didn't want it to be a babysitting hour.
Right. And this, so this is our policy on athletics, but as far as the, what happens with, at the high school, as far as allowing, you know, students with their activity card, they can, we can look at that policy as a separate one and going, we're going to have a separate fee for junior high students of two dollars or three dollars.
Right. Is there any way that we can just, like, not all students, but just the students? I don't know. If they're playing separate, it'd take a lot of paperwork to, to figure out which ones are playing sports to give them the discount.
It depends on what their activity, I mean, what their, their card looks like. If it has on there that they're paying, playing for a sport. I don't know.
If there was a way to designate that those, those cards going to those middle school students were playing sports.
Yeah.
That's the ones that need the discount because that's exactly what I, that's the agreement I'm looking to do. Those are the kids that we want to come support the high school students because that's our future.
Right. Want to be able to see them play.
I get that.
See, I mean, we can just bring that up as a future agenda item, see how we want to address that, this policy, unless someone has a problem that we approve as. And then just basically address, maybe at a future date, generally speaking, how do we want to address middle school going to high school games?
But to just let every, every student just get in because they got activity. I'm not, I'm not game for that because. But to just let every, every student just get in because they got activity, I'm not, I'm not game for that, because I, I agree with you, I think that's a lot of the reason it was done, is because they didn't want it to be a babysitting hour.
We also took the advice, sorry, on high school would include their activity card fee, the three fifty for that sport, and then a total of seven hundred fifty per student annually, which is what, kind of that through our conversation.
Cap it, yeah, just two sports and if they play a third, great, it's. Yeah.
Can you, can we make that work? Can we make that work?
I think that's great.
I mean, you're the dollars guy on that.
Well, we can make it work, because we've never done this before, right? So it's like.
Yeah, but I mean, we've got some exponentially increased costs.
Sure, sure.
And we're still not minimally covering it.
Sure that.
So.
Very good.
No other changes to that one.
Trustee Heinz, do you have a question on this?
Um, we're missing a period in the last paragraph between dual, um, now I'm moved, sorry.
All dual enrolled?
Right in the middle, public schools, period, duly enrolled, non-public education or public charter schools could also be blah blah.
Right in the middle of this one?
In the transportation column, or being in the transportation paragraph?
In the very la, well, this isn't, or IDEA, ADA, ADA section, yeah. The very last paragraph. The fourth line, right in the middle.
Yeah, right there.
And I'm sorry, that's so nitpicky.
Duly enrolled, non-public education.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Should be a period right here.
After school, after school.
Enrolled in public schools.
Because.
Duly enrolled, non-public education or public charter. Okay. Good catch.
Dum dum thing, dum dum.
I capitalized it, but I didn't.
I know.
I period it.
I thought it was somebody's name.
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Sorry.
No, I love it, I love it.
I love it too, thank you. The odds of me catching that are.
Are zero.
All right. Does anyone have any further questions on this one as opposed? All right. And that, because we just need a motion to approve thirty, thirty thirty.
Oh.
With the addition of the period.
The addition of the period.
And Trustee Heinz, do you second that one?
I will.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving thirty thirty with the corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Are we had a quorum with him missing, can we, should we wait for him to vote?
I don't know, I don't know if we can.
Here it comes.
You gotta say aye or nay.
Thank you.
I knew what it was.
You gotta let him know, you gotta let him know what he's voting on.
I don't wanna vote on.
Approving thirty thirty, except there was one correction.
Oh, the, what's, what's the period, right? Yes, correct.
Thank you, I just wanna make sure.
I knew.
I know you knew, but I wanna make sure the public knows.
Oh yeah, I knew.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so that's all of the policy items, now we're moving on to our traditional action items, we've got Paya River Technical Academy Service Agreement.
So, I, I attended a board meeting for Paya River Technical Academy in June, they did agree to our service agreement and the changes within that, which includes a new structure for payment. Couple of the highlights in this is we did increase some of the pay, or the, the fees wanted to offset some support for our counselors. The high school counselors do all the scheduling, or majority of the scheduling and pieces there, so we'll, we'll give them an additional stipend for that PERTA side. And then how we defined it. I'm walking through this, but how we defined, and this has all been generated out, but it's the competition for students that live in the Emmett School District. Students that attend academics at PERTA online and our Emmett School District, who have been in the Emmett School District for the last two years going, we will take the, basically with the ADA that they generate and subtract administrative fee from E S D and then the educational spending account costs. And then if they were to take out, so this is an example of the total expenses from this year's number of eighty-seven hundred. So every student of those four that they've talked about, that means they would pay the Emmett School District five thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars based on this year's number. Now next year is gonna be a higher number, so it'll, it'll change and it'll increase. But their, their number of, of for home three sixty is five hundred and the seventeen will stay the same, so. So they're gonna, they're gonna receive.
For not being at that meeting, does that make sense?
It does to me, what, where did we come up with the two years though?
That was a hotly debated topic for some time.
It was all we could agree on.
That was the compromise we.
Yes, they're great with it.
I, I, I'm good, I, I didn't, I, I just got one other thing and then I'll shut up about it.
And, and the responsible part of that compromise was that, you know, the reason they're paying us is because they don't wanna compete with us for academics, but the compromise was, we're not competing with them for in, in-person CTE, but we will start doing it online. So, that was kind of the happy meeting we arrived at.
So, since it was kinda just forced on the three or four, so that there wasn't a whole bunch of voices there. Did, were they left with the understanding that we do have oversight over them?
It is, it's written into here, yes.
I know it's written.
It has, it, it was understood that we are their authorizer. And that is, that is it.
But with the oversight of their budget, we have to make sure that they're solvent.
Correct, well.
Did they have understanding of that?
With the underst, you get that feeling, I did not get that feeling. I got the feeling that they were, like if we, as their authorizer, request to see their books, we can do that?
I, I just, I just want, I want it to be known before I leave the board that they know and understand that we are their authorizer, if they can't stay solvent, we don't have to authorize them. If they can't be solvent, they don't get authorized to move forward. Make sense?
Well, and their, their view on that would be, fine, we'll find another authorizer.
Yeah, good luck.
Right.
If you can't, if you, if you're not solvent, you're not gonna get authorized.
So, and one of the good things that had come out of that was that they've budgeted to pay the Emmett School District what, what was agreed on. They just basically asked us for an extension, which the extension wasn't even too much longer than normal, so it was.
Yeah, so, Mr. Goff, I had a conversation with Mr. Goff today, he's planning on bringing me the, both checks. I thought he was gonna get the first check in, in June, and he said, we had to get it in this fiscal year, June fiscal year, so he's gonna bring it tomorrow for seventy-six thousand, and the other fifty thousand will come as well. Yeah, I thought they were gonna pay that in September, but he just needed them in both fiscal years.
Because you guys do understand that is incumbent upon us as a board to make sure that that happens.
Sure, oh yeah.
That is our responsibility that they are solvent.
Oh.
Well, and what's different in this agreement is that every, we have to, you have to, as a board, approve it every single year.
Yeah.
And if you.
And we were supposed to anyhow.
Right. But, and that's exactly, we'd had a six-year agreement that we hadn't done that, and so now it's, it's reviewed every year and both sides can walk away at any point, if we're not getting paid for transportation and busing and at the end of that, at the end of next year, if you approve this, we're gonna commit to them for one year to provide these services for them. Now, in January, if we're, we're not getting what we need, we can, we can tell them, find your own way the following year.
And as long as we got that and it's in writing on board.
It is.
Because I want, I want this to work, I really do, you guys worked hard at this, I really want this to work.
Yeah.
I, I have one question, what is I S E E reporting?
I C, that's the Idaho Student Information Excellence.
Okay.
Worth it, that's what, that's how we get all of our funding.
Okay.
That's what's.
That's, I just, it was a new one.
Yep.
All this being said, I still don't think. I don't wanna word this so that I don't put my foot in my mouth. I still think our thoughts of this relationship of the minute PERTA can walk away from the Emmett School District, they will, I still feel that way. So I, I feel like there's no, like, their desire to really, like that we matter to them, we don't matter to them, like the Emmett School District doesn't matter.
Which is fine, as long as it's covered as a school district.
Right.
I, I just don't, like, that, that.
And I don't know that they, their, their desire to do some of their own, you know, I don't know that they want as high a level of oversight as they feel like they're getting, but I don't feel like they have a desire to walk away because as soon as they walk away, we'll sever ties and that's, that hurts them, that's a major issue. I, I don't believe that they want to truly separate from us, I, I think they wanted freedom to do some of the things that they're looking for without feeling as watched.
And then the reason I asked the question, I asked, and I wasn't trying to ruffle anybody's feathers or get anybody worked up, was I just, the state and has had from the beginning, the state has required us to make sure that they stay solvent. And if we'd have been doing our job, they'd have never gotten the position that they were in. Because we would have told them, you can't do this. You can't, you.
To which they would have said.
They don't have any choice, that's why we tell them, no, that's why you tell them, we're not authorizing you. You have no choice, you cannot be solvent. You have shown, they've shown us that if their solvency is not working. So.
Well, have they though, because I haven't seen a budget, I haven't seen their, you know what I mean?
When, when they can't pay their bills, it's shown that.
Oh, no, I agree, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, listen, there was a big sticking point in our little meeting with a word that I use, and their vice chair, anyway, but yeah.
So we, we have the, you have the right as the, as the Emmett School Board at any point to, to ask to, to, basically, you can get into everything financially if they have, we can basically, if we wanna do a forensic audit, you could do that up to that level.
That would cost us.
Well, yeah, it would, but I mean, I'm not saying at that level, I'm just saying if you truly wanted to get that deep into it, we have act, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah.
As their authorizer, and you also have the ability to put a plan together that they must meet by a cer- certain date or you can pull their, our, our authorization from it.
And I'm just trying to cover you guys' butts, because say, say they do go belly up, they can't make it through the year. Okay? Whose door is the state gonna come knocking on? Won't be theirs. It'll be the people that authorize them. Why weren't you doing your job to make sure that they were solvent? That we will be the ones that they come to, I promise you.
Yeah. And they're, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a valid point, and the bottom line is we need to do a better job of, in our budgets, the good news is, solvency at this point, like, they had, you know, they had the reserves and stuff to make it, they weren't insolvent, because they didn't have the money, but they, they couldn't pay us without violating some of their bond agreements, so the cash was there, but anyway. We, we, we need to do a better job of watching, but it, it wasn't as though they were about to, you know, go, go bankrupt, so to speak. So, anyway, but this will allow us to, and I think we've made it fairly clear, we need to do a better job of actually looking at the budget and making sure that, that they've been run primarily independently for quite a while, which I think they're gonna continue to do, but we've got.
It's great.
Yeah.
So when do we do that then, when do we?
January.
Oversee the.
It's written in that they'll be, I, I believe we have it quarterly now, they'll, they'll come to us and talk to us quarterly.
How? How? Patrice quarterly meetings and talk to us. And we'll agree to their budget annually as well.
Okay, and that happens when?
Well, we have one representative on the board and then a second one that, that has set through, but I, we could.
Not on the board anymore, they voted.
They can, they can be on the board, they just can't.
There is, it's not a voting member.
Sure.
We don't have, which makes sense, we shouldn't have a voting.
Voting member, yeah, for sure.
But as far as at any point, I mean, we can pull their budget, if you wanted to see their budget monthly, I could ask them to just share it with all the board members if you'd like. They'll do it.
What about, so, I guess, because part of my misunderstanding, I guess, of the meeting also was, when we're supposed to get paid? So is that just at the end of the year, we, we, we basically upfront the costs to pay for the transportation and all those things throughout the year, and then they pay us at the end of the year?
No, transportation is paid, I believe, quarterly, he bills, Ben, do you bill quarterly on transportation?
Every semester.
Every semester.
Okay, twice a year.
And we've traditionally sent one bill, it has a date in there of having the bill based on the February payment or the February ADA, and so that's, we've always waited till after that to put the bill together, and shoot, and it's been, it's, every year has been in the fiscal year that we've been involved with, this is the first time that it's, that it's had to fall within two different fiscal years.
I see.
Okay.
It's gonna work. It's good.
Yeah, no, we're good.
No, but there, there's things.
I just always keep up on the front. And I just want you guys to be aware.
Yeah, no, yeah, there, there, it's been a learning process on both boards. And then I just crazy what to go over, some of these I thought were handy on this, PERTA did agree to this, costs have gone up and we had raised costs, so this, this next budget was basically, how can we adjust it so that PERTA isn't putting a financial burden on the Emmett District to survive, and they, they agreed with this one completely.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why your increases, I mean, this, their standard service agreement increases went from seventy-two thousand to ninety-three thousand. So there's been, you know, our, our special ed costs have gone up and our administrative costs, and so they've agreed to that increase as well.
Okay. But thank you for that, Mike.
And there, and there is a, there's also, where we were getting the discretionary dollars back, and that was where a lot of the concern came from, there's now just a set fee on every student that takes a course out there that is one of our students. We, you know, we, we came up with a formula, said, it's, it, basically, we lose thirty dollars per, per class. So, we know exactly how many students take how many classes, that's another fee that will be added into this at the end of the year. Because they agree, we shouldn't lose money.
Yeah. That was another, I was gonna say, there's been years where it's like, maybe we won, when, you know, when, you know, disproportionate to the enrollment or maybe lost, but anyway, we came up with a formula with Mr. Woods and Emmett's trying, for some time, trying to figure out what is it more or less, and we came as close as we could and PERTA liked that formula, so.
Yep.
It's been approved by the PERTA board, it's just, it's up to you where you're at on this.
So we just need a motion to approve the service agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement.
Very good.
With PERTA.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Heinz. Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the service agreement with Paya River Technical Academy, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Very good. All right, and then we also have the, need to approve or deny the charter amendments.
So part of the whole discussion and to go, and not note so much negotiations, is our legal counsel felt that their, their charter did not allow them to to actually offer academic courses as it's defined, and so there's only two edits to this. I believe I left them in red, so right here, PERTA may provide, well, if you read the whole thing, targeted students provide career technical education in the independent school district, middle school and high school students. And we requested that PERTA may provide online high school credit academic courses to students in grades eight through twelve. Okay, so that allows them, so an eighth grader to come in and take, start taking courses to the high school level, which is kind of where, where we have through twelfth grade. And then that's at the very end, it just adds, oops, which one passed, CTE and academic to me dual enrollment requirements. Those are the two changes to their charter that allow them to do academic courses eight through twelve. And I left it at eight through twelve, because their intentions, they said, were, were not to offer academics to junior high, and they kinda had the discussion on it, but they, they're okay with CTE to the junior high, and we are as well. But there's no need for them, and they said there's no need for them to offer academic courses to junior high kids.
And I get it, it's like, it's online academic, so they're, you know, again, not trying to compete with us for students who are in the classroom.
Okay.
Is it specified throughout that it's online?
In red, if you look back here, yes.
Online.
There's really not much, any other places that it talks about online education, other than that piece right in there. Sorry, pass it. Yeah, they, they, they tell us, which I believe them, that they do not wanna offer face-to-face, so. And this charter won't, I mean, the way it's written won't allow them.
Not.
And, and I see why this works, written into the charter, what's that?
No loopholes.
Uh, that's pretty clear, so I mean, I think if you had to, one, we'd have the strength as the authorizer, two, from a legal standpoint, it would be hard to argue that.
Our legal counselors didn't believe that, I mean, that they had the right even in the charter to offer academics, so this only allowed them to operate, you know, online.
Now, my next question is, is doing this, we're moving forward with this, we've already got state approval, that we can change this and move forward with it?
They're, they have to approve it, which they did in June, now you have to approve it before they even send it to the state.
Okay, so, we're, we're, we're their roadblock then?
Yes.
And so what do we do? What do we do if the state says no? And so what do we do? What do we do if the state says no?
We don't have to do anything. It's-
They just wouldn't be able to-
They just wouldn't be able to offer, yeah.
Yeah, they just said-
That'd be, this is as usual, as I said last year.
So yeah, good question.
All right. Very good. Uh, any further questions on the charter amendments? They're pretty straightforward. If not, we just need a motion to approve the charter amendments.
So motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Buck. Any further discussions? All in favor of approving the Fayette River Charter Amendments? Say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Uh, and then we've got superintendent request for vacation. We need a motion to dismiss with prejudice.
Fireball, I say. Fireball.
Great. Why do they get to go on vacation?
Per district policy, anytime I want to take over more than five days of vacation off, I'm supposed to um, request uh, permission from the board. And I would like to take um, dates through um, October seventeenth to the thirtieth to go on an African safari.
Only if this vacation was bought at a fundraiser that supports Emmett Athletics.
Did you buy that?
I bought it at the Rotary Auction.
Oh, the Rotary Auction. Which does, which does, yes. That's good.
Yes.
Awesome. James bought it two years ago and hasn't used it yet.
Oh, no joke.
Yeah.
They, I tell you what, the people that bought it said, they have, actually went on it, said it's not bad.
Oh, I'm excited about it, but I wanted to, and so we were gonna do it in the summer. Um, and it just didn't work out. So now I have it set for those dates. Well, I'm gonna let them know on Monday, or I guess today is Monday, if you allow me to. But I'd like to take those dates off, so.
Just please tell Bob that we need him here those days.
He'll be here those days. And it won't, it won't affect any, it'll be right after the board meeting. And then um, the week after the board meeting, and then I'll be back by the first of November, I think it is. So Thursday, the thirtieth is a Thursday, so.
I leave your breeding garden pictures.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to include those in the next board meeting.
No, I don't put any, I wouldn't have put any pictures of any animals in. Good.
Come on.
Maybe just the land.
You can get away with that in Emmett. Anyway.
Maybe. I don't know anymore.
All right, uh, so we just need a motion to approve the superintendent's request for vacation.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Got both of those. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, enjoy the safari.
Thank you.
And uh, approved or denied recommendations for certified staffing?
Here's some of our, list of our final staffs. Staffing going into the school year, I think we have two, two open positions um, still, but we have um, the, the final of our resignations from June, some transfers into different positions, and then new hires, one in special education. Susie Morgan is coming out of retirement to help us with uh, middle school nursing. And then um, our teacher, a new art teacher at Drew North.
We don't have any questions. Need a motion to approve these certified staff-
Oh, I'm just, just to clarify, I forgot, and we do this with administrators, but we also have transferred Dana Williams, or I'm recommending we transfer Dana Williams from her PE position into the middle school, uh, assistant vice principal role.
Which is awesome. Congratulations. She's not our vice principal?
She is.
That's what we're transferring to. I hadn't, I usually separate those out all in-
I'm not understanding that right. Did, did he say assistant vice principal?
She, she, no, she is assistant principal of middle system, or vice principal. You can, it's not assistant.
Not the assistant vice, she's assistant or the vice.
We're gonna, we're gonna name her the AVP.
That's a demotion in some other world. That's a bad thing.
That's true, that's true. We can't do that to her.
Can I move that we just do this?
Approve recommendations?
Okay.
So we have a motion to approve. Trustee Hines, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, uh, we'll give it to uh, Mr. Buck. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we have a possible change in upcoming meeting dates.
Well, I'm curious if the board would be um, amenable to changing our August date. I have a conflict on the eleventh, and I was wondering if any date other than August eleventh would work. The twelfth, or as late as the eighteenth, that's the first day of school. So, I mean-
Just do that Tuesday after? So the twelfth?
So the twelfth, and twelfth would be perfect for us. And it just, then it's just bumped by a day. If that's okay.
Very true. Send out reminders. Do we need a, oh yeah, do we have to do a motion on that?
Yep. And then I can publish it. I'm not in the paper or anything, but I'll put it around and-
Okay.
Social media.
Need a motion to uh, move our standard monthly meeting in August to the twelfth.
So move.
Very good.
We'll let you second that.
She will let you. I love it.
You have permission, sir.
Yes.
I'm used to that.
I like it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and now we have board member input for future agenda items.
Are we gonna talk about graduation ceremony perhaps being like sooner on the calendar than how we did this year?
So usually your, your vice principal, or not your vice, your principal will come in and you, early, early fall and, and say, this is the date we'd like. And I've already given him some recommendations.
Okay.
But at that point, you can either deny it or change-
Sure.
Your actual days.
Yeah, just-
We just ran it the last day of school. It was in a hot, um, we're looking at, you know, moving it to the Friday prior to Memorial Day. So the Friday of Memorial Day weekend.
Or-
Different rate job.
What?
Different rate job.
Well, so that's what you were talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just maybe earlier.
And they actually made a recommendation also. I've heard this from a couple of people I thought was a great idea. I'll talk to Mr. Parks about it, is moving it to a start time of, of ten AM. So it's a little cooler.
Well, we talked about that too. I thought the reason we couldn't do that was because we couldn't be set up.
We'd have to set it up the day before. We'd, we'd have to set it up the day before.
Is that work for-
I don't know.
The high school?
We'll have to figure it out.
The only thing, the only thing I thought of driving here, cause I was thinking about that, was just really let these students know, no pranks. Like, you think you would be funny ruining graduation. That is not funny.
Well, I mean, the big setup is the stage. Right? The setup the day before is that-
I know, but I, I did just see some high school student thinking, oh, this would be hilarious.
Yeah, no.
No, it wouldn't be.
Sorry, just super thought. Um, cause I was, I worked on project graduations this year, just to kind of muddy the waters. Um, typically, when graduation has been held in the evening, there's more attendance for project graduation, but when it's earlier in the day, we, I had hundred and fifty kids signed up to go to project graduation and a hundred showed up. Cause there's more time in between. So with that more time in between, they go out, they start partying and they half of them-
I heard that too.
So that's just consideration, cause the purpose of project graduation is to provide a safe place for them to, to celebrate. So just-
That makes sense.
Just to super thought.
Yeah, it's crazy.
But that will come early fall, and we can come up with some ideas and, but they'll bring that, yeah.
Curious to see what Larry's take is on that too.
Yeah, I'd really like to just follow his recommendation.
So, okay. So that, anyway, we'll address that when it comes up, I guess. Then any other, uh, anything else we want to put on the future agenda? We don't have to. It didn't seem to develop as time goes on, so you, you know-
Like, I'd just like to, can we get Nick in here, Nick Wuffley? You think we can get him to, you think you can drag him down here? I just would like to openly tell him, thank you. He's done some good work. I think, isn't he doing the, the bathrooms too?
Yeah, yeah. No, he, he helped that baseball team out quite a bit.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna, I just wanna tell him, thank you.
As long as he'll see that as a thank you and not having to attend.
My evening, Ronnie.
Uh, just tell him to come with me. Tell, tell him to be here like it, I don't know.
Put him right at the beginning of the gym, he can be in and out.
Yeah, in and out. We won't hold him.
All right.
I just want to give him some recognition because he deserves it.
Very good. All right, if there's no future agenda items, we need someone to put us in executive session and then call up the numbers. Nobody wants to, nobody wants-
Okay, I will try and do this. I move that we go into executive session seventy-four, two oh six, one B, C and D.
Thank you. We have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Weeks. We need a roll call vote, Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna move into executive. Appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Okay, you're on.
Right there, all right. Thank you. Had a productive conversation during executive. We do have no action items. We just need a motion to adjourn.
To a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Heinz, so motion by trustee Weeks. All in favor of adjourned and say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.